Call a meeting to order. This is a meeting of September 4th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. And the first item of business is the order of business. So are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? I have a question for Mr. Soren. On item D, the participation and maintenance agreement for Villard Street, that is West Villard that they're talking about? Is that the West Villard out to the interstate?
It would be from interchange to interchange, all the way through town.
It would be?
Yep. It's a mill and overlay on Villard Street through town. It's a regional urban road, which means our share is a 10%. State picks up 10% and an 80% federal. And then we take maintenance of the project.
Right. But they wouldn't be doing any redesign work then on that one?
Not with this. It's just strictly a mill and overlay project.
Okay.
They have asked us to program another project this year actually for that. So it'd be four years out probably to do some redesign of West Villard or the West Business Loop, particularly with turn lanes and some of those improvements.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any comments or questions on any of the consent agenda items?
A move we approve.
Sarah, second.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, no vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Almond?
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda. And the first item we have there is to hear the July financial report. Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. I'll highlight a few items from the financial report through July.
So are you done highlighting those items now? Or?
Does that mean we're in the black?
Apparently.
I can go through the July financials without the PowerPoint while he's rebooting, if you'd like.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and start?
Up for the budget. We'll begin with the general fund report. With 59% of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3.2 million and were 98% collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmentals include revenues such as the highway distribution tax and oil production tax and is 60% collected compared to budget. Our licenses, fees, and services, which include building permit revenues and oil royalties, is 58% collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is up $298,000 over last year. Our sales of city lots and equipment, we've sold $1 million of city lots through July. And our total general fund revenues equal $7.6 million and were 68% collected compared to budget. In our general fund expenses, our general government, which includes administration, court, finance, and buildings and sites, is 63% expended compared to budget. Public safety is 59% expended compared to budget. Engineering and streets is 58% expended compared to budget. And our cultural services is 43% expended compared to budget. Our total general fund expenditures equal $6.6 million through July and were 57% expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, our water and wastewater revenues equal $5.7 million through July and were 89% collected compared to budget and 69% more than last year. The increase in revenue is due mostly to our bulk water sales. Our expenses and capital outlays total $5.2 million, which is 97% expended compared to budget. In our solid waste fund, our revenue is $2 million through July, which is 70% collected compared to budget and 30% more than last year. And our expenses and capital outlays total $1.7 million, which is 61% expended compared to budget. In our sales tax reports, in our 1% sales tax, we received $758,000 of revenue in July, which is up 60% for the year. In our 1% sales tax fund, we have it broken down into three segments. The first is the 50% share, which transfers 50% of our total revenues to the street projects fund. This transfer occurs at year end. The transfer in 2012 is estimated to be $2.6 million. The second is our 20% share, which is for job creation and senior programs. This segment funds Stark Development, elder care, RSVP, and the Senior Citizen and Southwest Regional Grant Programs. And our third segment is the 30% share, which is set aside for capital improvements. The expenses here include part of the Badlands Activity Center pledge payment. In our 1/2% sales tax, we received $379,000 of revenue in July. It's also up 60% for the year. Our expenses include the payment for the West River Community Center bond. In our hospitality tax, we received $93,000 of revenue. It is up 44% over last year. Our expenses include $1 million for the Badlands Activity Center pledge payment and $155,000 paid to the airport and Parks and Rec for one-time subsidies. Our occupancy tax breakdown, we received $50,000 of revenue in July. It's up 72% over last year. And our expenses include $192,000 paid to the CVB for their subsidy and $60,000 for the Special Events Grant. In the street projects report, we received $81,000 in revenues and we expended $1.1 million towards those projects through July. And in our development impact fee program, this program has a balance of $385,000 available for commitment at the end of July. Those are some of the highlights. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Are there any questions on the report? Are there any slides that you would like to see? I see that they've got the slides working. Not, would there be a motion to approve the report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, no vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Almond?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. The next item then is to hear the first reading of the 2013 budget ordinance. And presenting that is Mrs. Johnson.
Mr. President, Commissioners, tonight I will be presenting the 2013 budget proposal that includes highlights of the revenues, expenses, and capital items. We'll begin with the revenues. In our general fund, our property tax revenue includes a $200,000 increase for new construction coming on the tax roll, but no increase for existing properties. It should be noted that there is somewhat of a lag between construction and the addition to the tax roll. Only properties that were finished with construction by February 1st of 2012 are included as new revenue in 2013. Our building permit revenue is budgeted at $600,000 for 2013, which is 100% more than budgeted in 2012, but more accurate to what we've actually received in the last few months. We are budgeting $90,000 from the COPS grant that we were awarded in 2012 for two additional officers. And we are also budgeting $425,000 in Energy Impact Grant Dollars for a SWAT vehicle and a brush truck. These will only be purchased if the grant dollars are awarded. Our state aid distribution, which is a percentage of the state sales tax, has continued to increase. We are estimating a 23% increase over our 2011 actual receipts. Our administrative fees, which are charged to the enterprise funds to offset costs incurred by the general fund that also benefit the utilities, are calculated as a percentage of projected revenue. The state does allow this transfer to be as much as 20%, but our transfer in 2013 will again be 8%. There's also a transfer of $1 million from the Oil Impact Fund for operational expenses related to oil impact and a transfer of $500,000 from the sales tax for a new animal shelter. In our sales tax funds, we're budgeting a 10% increase in our 1-1/2% sales taxes over the 35% increase that we're expecting in 2012, a 7-1/2% increase in hospitality tax, and a 15% increase in occupancy tax for 2013. In our enterprise funds, we are budgeting an 8% increase in revenue due to growth in both residential and commercial accounts. Our rate increases include a 5% increase in water and wastewater consumption rates, a wastewater base rate increase for commercial accounts based on meter size, and a 7% increase in residential refuse. We are also reinstituting the wastewater backup fee of 25 cents per account due to several claims in 2012. In our expenses, there is a 3% cost of living adjustment to the pay scale. Nonexempt employees will receive any step adjustments on January 1st. The exempt employees are on a performance-based system with a 7% salary pool budgeted for 2013. We have 14 new staff positions. These include an HR tech, two police officers, a chief engineering tech, a custodian, a part-time deputy clerk of court, a property appraiser tech, a part-time librarian, a chief, a senior, and a laborer position in our solid waste, and a chief and an operator position in our water wastewater fund. As we grow, there's more and more pressure on our sales tax funds. In 2013, we will transfer $4.1 million from our sales tax funds towards the construction of the Public Works Building. Transfers from our Oil Impact Fund include $1 million to the general fund, which is money we receive from our mining-related employment exceeding 7-1/2% and $7.3 million to our three major construction projects, the wastewater treatment plant, the Public Works Building, and the Public Safety Center. We are also anticipating a 10 cent increase in water costs from Southwest Water Authority. In our capital plan, we have several capital infrastructure items whose priority will be determined by the water and wastewater modeling that will be included in our comprehensive plan. Our biggest items in our capital plan, in both dollars and size, are the wastewater treatment plant, the Public Works Building, and the Public Safety Center. All are expected to begin construction by 2013. This slide shows the funding sources that began in 2012. We will receive $2.9 million from the Oil Hub Cities Grant and $4.1 million from sales tax for the Public Works Building in 2013. We'll receive $2.9 million from the Oil Hub Cities Grant for the wastewater treatment plant and $1.5 million from the Energy Impact Grant for the Public Safety Center. Our other capital items include a street sweeper and asphalt grinder in our street department, the animal shelter, a patrol vehicle and radio equipment for the police department, a water storage tank and repainting of two existing tanks, improvements to the Lincoln Lift Station, a clay sidewell expansion, and several trucks. In total, our general fund budget has increased 16% over the 2012 budget, with 6% coming from additional staff requests, 5% from payroll, and 5% for capital requests. Our budget for 2013 shows $142,000 use of cash in our general fund, mostly due to capital requests. Our enterprise funds do not require use of cash as they are building cash reserves for their large capital costs that include the wastewater treatment plant and the anticipated landfill upgrades when the master plan is complete. Those are some of the major highlights for the 2013 budget. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Any questions from commissioners or comments? Okay. Mr. Sickler, what is the ordinance number for this ordinance?
I cannot have that in front of me, Mr. Mayor. It is number 1484.
Okay. Well, at this time, we'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding ordinance 1484, which is the budget ordinance. If so, you can step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public that would like to comment? Any comments by commissioners? Hearing none, would there be a motion regarding the first reading of 1484?
Motion to approve.
Sarah, second.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, no vote. Mr. Almond?
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to item C, and that's reports. And I believe, Mr. Kessel, these are yours.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commissioner. I have several reports for you this evening. The first is a human resource report. This is the second installment of this report. It also includes a spreadsheet that's been provided to you. We went through about six different hiring processes from June to August. Of that, there was 98 total applicants. 59 of those were for six open police officer positions. 54 total applicants were disqualified for various things that could be incomplete applications, that could be they didn't sign their application. It could be from a lot of different reasons. 23 withdrew, excuse, yeah, 23% withdrew and 22% were actually interviewed. Of those that were interviewed, we hired six different people, two in the police department, a property appraiser tech, and two solid waste operators and one water utility operator. So we're happy to have those staff join us. We wanted to just make sure that you have a synopsis of those hiring processes. And as we have, we continue, well, the plan is to continue to give a monthly report on our ability to hire staff. Unless there's questions, the next is the IT report. Included in your documents is a PowerPoint spreadsheet. I won't go through that PowerPoint for you. But suffice it to say that we have been, the staff in that department has done an excellent job by upgrading current technologies, incorporating new technologies, and actually writing some technologies for our needs. A lot of those new software products have come in our Public Works and Planning Department. They have helped to eliminate staff calculations and simply make processes easier, especially on the web-based permitting process. And another nifty little piece of software was written for our library. We have a limitation on how often people can use computers, and this has eliminated or at least made less interactions, negative interactions with the public. So I just wanted to give some praise to our IT staff in that regard. Aaron Myers has done a wonderful job when it comes to incorporating new IT into the City of Dickinson. The next item then is just a joint powers agreement with Grand Forks.
Mr. Kessel?
Oh, sorry.
When you talk about IT staff, this is the Department of One?
It is.
Okay.
Aaron Myers is our IT staff. He's the one that sits behind the cameras that record our meetings today. And he not only does all these software upgrades, but he's also in charge of maintaining and making sure all the computers, all these tablets, and all these other devices run the way they were intended. So he's a busy man.
And it sounds like he's very effective also.
He is. We're lucky to have him. And a graduate of DSU and TR Scholar, by the way.
Oh, great.
So then the next report is a joint powers agreement with the City of Grand Forks. This is given to you as in terms of a report and something that we would like to see approved at an ensuing meeting. It is for Plan Review Services. I want to recognize Planner Corton. He has put a lot of work into this document. We've had several conference calls with the City of Grand Forks to put this together. Basically, it entails the City of Grand Forks using their staff to do plan reviews, selected plan reviews, commercial plan reviews for the City of Dickinson, providing their comments, and then we would issue a building permit and such based on those comments. We have provided the City of Grand Forks with a building permit that we'd like them to review, kind of as a test. They're excited about the agreement and this process, and their commission has provisionally approved the document that you have before you. I say provisionally because they allowed their attorney to make any changes that they deem fit as we move back and forth. So if you have any comments related to that, please share those with either Planner Corton or myself or with the City Attorney's Office. We'll try to incorporate those thoughts and bring a completed document maybe at the next commission meeting for your review and approval. Assuming no other comments, the last report that I have is we had our wastewater reclamation facility groundbreaking. It was held on August 29th. It was only, I think, 104 and 20 mile an hour winds. But other than that, it was a great event. Senator, excuse me, Governor, Lieutenant Governor Drew Wrigley, Senate Majority Leader Rich Wardner, Deputy Director Jerry Fisher, and of course, President Johnson all spoke at the event. It was well attended, and we received coverage, I know, by at least two different dailies and two different television stations. So I think we had it covered well. President, that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Any questions or comments for the city administrator? Okay. I think we'll move to the Fire Department report. Chief Seavock.
President Johnson, I know we're only three minutes away from your first scheduled timetable. It'll take me a bit more than three minutes to present this. I'll gladly give that time up if you'd like to go directly to the 455 timetable.
Well, we could do that. Before we do that, are there any questions for the fire chief that may not pertain to this particular report, but questions you may have had for him? All right. Well, then.
I'll be back.
We'll let you come back.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Dossinger, are you ready with the timetable item? We have an introduction and swearing in of the new police officer. So Chief Dossinger.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. At this time, I'd like to introduce to the community and to the commission one of our newer officers, Officer Stephen Matson. Want to step up? Stephen has actually been with our department since January 1st, but due to some scheduling issues, we haven't been able to bring him to the commission meeting. Stephen Hales from Maplewood, Minnesota. This time, Mr. Kessel, to come do the swearing in, please.
Will support, obey, and defend the Constitution. And laws of the United States. State of North Dakota. And City of Dickinson. To the best of my ability. And that I will strive always. To meet the highest ethical standards. Implicit in my appointment. And in furtherance. Of the best public interest. Thank you, Mr. Matson. Welcome. Two and nine.
Chief Dossinger left a few blanks in there that maybe you can fill in and tell us about yourself.
All right. Well, as I said, I grew up in Maplewood, Minnesota, which is a suburb of St. Paul, which is where I was born. Went to college, Morehead, Minnesota. After college, I returned to Maplewood for a little while, searching for jobs there in Minnesota. It's pretty hard. So I, you know, I spent some time in Fargo. I lived in North Dakota for a little bit, so I thought, why not try out in North Dakota? And I know the western half of the state here is kind of booming and there's plenty of opportunities here. And I was researching cities and I thought Dickinson was probably the best choice. And I went and tried and here I am.
So had you been out to western North Dakota before coming out here to work?
No, I have not. I have not prior to that.
Okay. And how about finding a place to live? How has that gone for you?
Captain Siani kind of helped me out with that one. And I've been living in the same spot ever since, so.
Okay. And you've, let's see, we're already into September and the chief said you started the first of the year, so you've got eight months in?
Yep, that's right.
How's that been going?
Pretty good. Enjoying every minute of it.
Have you been busy?
Very busy.
Okay. Do you have any friends or family here with you tonight?
I've got my fiancee. She's sitting right back here.
Okay.
We're all. Yep, we're going to get married here in November.
Well, congratulations.
Yep, thank you.
Any other comments, questions here?
That means you're going to stay, right?
Hopefully.
Officer Matson, you mentioned you went to college at Morehead. There's a couple different higher education places there. Which one did you attend?
Minnesota State Morehead.
Excellent. Well, now I know you have a good education.
Yeah, well, 50% of the graduates from Morehead State have worked out for the city, so.
There you go.
That's a pretty good batting average. Well, welcome. We're glad you're here and hope you have a very good career here.
Thanks. Looking forward to it.
Chief, anything else?
I'd just like to comment that we still do have five openings.
Really?
At the police level, we do have two conditional job offers pending the background investigation. So we're still trying to find people and we still have two dispatcher spots open as well.
So you have five sworn officer positions open plus two dispatcher?
That's correct.
Okay.
Do they have any friends? Minnesota's been a pretty good draw here. Can you bring somebody with?
Yeah, I've got one friend that's looking to come out here, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck now. Okay. Chief Seavock, I think we can get you in now. We were just thinking you need a little more exercise, so we're going to walk you back and forth from the back of the room to the front of the room a few times, so.
Thank you for that, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm glad you're so concerned with my health. I do appreciate that. As soon as I catch my breath, I'll continue with the presentation. We want to do just an informational presentation for you tonight on the Dickinson Fire Department Training Site. I know you all know where it's located, in the southwest portion of town. The developed area sits on approximately seven acres. Seven live-fire propane props are available on that site. We'll get into those in a little bit. You can see some of them there. The very first structure, the brick garage, that was the very first structure that was out there. I don't know if you can make it out from the slide, but you'll see a little construction porta potty off to the side of that garage, so we don't have full facilities out there. Depending on the day and depending on the training, that little porta potty becomes the most important structure out there regardless of whatever else we've built. In the garage, approximately half of the garage is taken up with a self-contained breathing apparatus training maze that teaches our people how to become confident while wearing an air pack and while in an environment where they can become entrapped and entangled and so on. Matter of fact, that particular training prop that's inside there was disassembled by us one year and taken to the state fire school at the request of the North Dakota Firefighters Association. After doing that one time, we decided we wouldn't do it again. It's quite involved to take it apart and put it back together. The tower, which looks somewhat like an agricultural building, we'll get a little bit closer with that in a minute, was the second structure that was built out there. You see a couple of the industry-based oilfield-related props sitting out there. And the white structure, which is a control tower, keep that in mind as we talk a little bit more about this. In addition to the seven acres that we have under development here, we have approximately an additional 13 acres available for growth and expansion for a total of a 20-acre parcel. For structural firefighting, we rely heavily on the four-story tower. That was, like I said, the second structure that was built out there. The smaller building off to the side is a Class A burn room where we get our members initially experienced with some heat and some smoke from an actual fire. There's a working sprinkler system on the first and second floor, a working fire suppression system on the first and second floor of the tower courtesy of an out-of-state sprinkler contractor that was working in Dickinson that contractor that was working in Dickinson that donated that to us, including the installation of it. Not only can we show our firefighters what happens when a fire sprinkler head activates, we can also train them on what to do to stop that flow of water. That system comes complete with a fire department connection on the exterior of the building and on the second floor, a standpipe connection, which is becoming extremely important as we see three- and four-story buildings built in the community. A standpipe is a pre-piped waterway in the stairwell of a three- or four- or higher-story structure to help us get water to the flow level that we need without carrying hose up the stairwells. So extremely timely for us to have that type of donation made. This was made a few years ago. Extremely important to us as we train with it. In addition, the tower itself is designed for technical rescue training. There are repelling anchors on the roof, and on the south side of the structure, which you can't see in this slide, there is an enclosed exterior stairwell like you would find on silos and elevators and things like that to help us practice technical rescue from situations like that. The car that you see sitting off to the side, contrary to what Mr. Kessel may tell you, is not one of the vehicles I own, although it does somewhat look like a couple of them. That is a live-fire training prop, a vehicle prop. That prop, and I'll show you another slide of it here in a minute, that prop, the concrete it sits on, the control station for it, was all built by the volunteer firefighters. It was designed and built by the volunteers, and everything that went into it, with the exception of a very few parts and fittings, was money raised by their efforts and generosity from the community. The prop itself is designed to simulate an interior fire on a car, a fire in the engine compartment, a fire at one of the wheel wells, or a fire in the trunk. As you can see there, we're training some firefighters one evening here. That's before we got the concrete for it that it sits on today. As we were developing the training site, we were approached by the North Dakota Association of Oil and Gas Producing Counties, and we were asked to consider developing at least a portion of the training site to support some industry-based, especially oilfield-based, live-fire training props. In 2005, the Association of Oil and Gas Producing Counties received a $100,000 grant from state legislature to assist in constructing, in constructing the oilfield emergencies training site and in developing a curriculum for it. In addition, the Dickinson Fire Department that year was awarded a $50,000 oil impact grant for site development. And we started to develop live-fire props, one of those being a gas meter prop. This happens to be a residential gas meter prop. A prop that simulates a ruptured line. You can see the discoloration of the ground. That's recycled concrete. That's how hot that prop gets. It discolors the ground like that. A flange prop, which simulates a failure on a piping system. The treater prop. The oil tank prop. Now, that shows some of our firefighters applying foam to the oil tank prop. You can't see the flames, I guess, at the corner. One of the things that we don't do, contrary to popular opinion, is we don't teach people how to be oilfield firefighters. What we put on at our training site for other fire departments and for our own personnel is more of a safety class than anything else. So why do we have the live-fire props? What purpose does it serve? It gives them an experience with real fire, with radiant heat, with the noise of those fires. Some of those props literally scream when they're burning. It also teaches them the obstacles that they'll get around. We have pipes laying out there. We have earthen dikes and berms that they have to come across, how to pull the hose and things like that. Here's a team fighting the oil tank fire at night. Comments we've heard from other fire departments, and I know I've mentioned this here at other meetings, comments we've heard from other fire departments when they go through this training is, you know, that's the first time we've worked together on a hose line. That's the first time we've done something like this as a team. You know, that's the first time anybody's ever explained to us how to apply foam. The tank prop, if you remember, we received a large grant to retrofit that tank prop a few years ago. That simulates the tank on fire, the dike on fire, or a tank boil over. All of these props you've seen so far are controlled from that white tower that you saw in slide number one. In addition to the oilfield props we built, we developed a curriculum. This is a copyrighted curriculum. In that textbook, you'll see the chapters communicating the emergency, evaluating the emergency, responding to production site emergencies, responding to the drilling site, response, resources, real stories. The one thing you don't see is how to be an oilfield firefighter. It's not what we train them to do. This is more or less a safety, not more or less, this is a safety class more so than anything else. A lot of times, the best thing a responding fire department can do is nothing at all. Make sure whatever is happening on the site stays on the site and doesn't spread to the surrounding area. Now, that applies when you have drilling sites and production sites in the rural areas. It doesn't necessarily apply when a community grows up around them. Depending on the event and depending on what happens, we may not have the luxury in the city limits of just letting it play out. We may have to take some offensive action versus just defensive action. The piping you see in the background is a drafting pit where we test our fire pumpers. The cement pad that you see in the foreground, again, was done with efforts of the volunteer firefighters and generosity of the community and fundraising efforts, and that's the future home for a prop that's called a build-and-burn. And you see that under construction right now. Here again, the material and the labor to make this happen is all done by the volunteers and through the generosity of the community. This is going to replicate a two-story, a two-story, a two-bedroom, approximately 924-square-foot residential home. No, surely it's not for sale. So a gleam in your eye there for a minute. But what this is designed to do is very basic construction. It has two layers of sheetrock inside, and what it's designed to do is allow us to build burn packages of Class A materials in any rooms we want and be able to train our firefighters in a real-world, actual environment that's really not duplicated anywhere else. The live-fire training in a structure like that follows the guidelines of the NFPA pamphlets concerning live-fire trainings, and the structure has to be signed off by a certified instructor out of Bismarck before we use it. That's the training site as it sits today. What we'd like to see in the future, especially if Dickinson continues to grow, and especially if Dickinson continues to grow in the southerly direction, we envision a classroom out there someday. It would really be nice to have our classes right onsite, be able to step out of the classroom and go right to work on the training site. Concerning the oilfield emergencies training session, we have a class scheduled for September 22nd, and we have a class scheduled for October 20th. Both of those sessions will be funded by grants through the North Dakota Firefighters Association and the Department of Emergency Services. Right now, we're just waiting to see if we get enough students signed up so that we can hold those, because there is a minimum number to make this effective. And that's just an update of what we've got out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. A great job on the presentation. Questions or comments here?
Chief, does the Dickinson Rural Fire Department use that as a training facility?
We make it available to them. They have trained out there on the vehicle fire prop.
As far as the oil structures and so on, do they-
No, they haven't.
Chief, how often does the site get used?
Through the, well, through the summer months, we use it at least once a month, if not twice a month. Just this last, past week, we had live-fire training out there. So it's used once a month for sure, and many, many times, depending on what the technical rescue or special operations team is doing, it's used twice a month at least. Not always with the live-fire props, but there's a lot of other resources out there besides those.
Chief, I know that the tactical team is always looking for structures that they can play in. Is the one that you build before you burn it down one that they could use for their, do their training?
Yes, it is. Actually, the structure of the build-and-burn stays standing, and if sheetrocked properly, and I have found out the hard way that I have no future in drywall, if sheetrocked properly, we can get 20 to 30 burns out of the structure before we have to tear the sheetrock down and re-sheetrock it. But the basic structure's going to be there, and yes, that offer's already been made to local law enforcement. As is discussions that have taken place, the comments I've made about a classroom, discussions have taken place just very informally, that maybe that could be a joint classroom. And there's other ways we could possibly develop portions of that training site to be a joint law enforcement, fire department training site.
Anything else for the chief? Like I said, very good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to the timetable agenda. We have a 5:00 item there. It's an annexation, and Mr. Sickler, normally Mr. Coling introduces the annexations. Are you ready to do that?
I would, or Mr. Kessel, too.
So the answer's no?
No. No. So in other words, we're not being billed for tonight's session? Is that what you're saying?
No, I took that part.
Actually, Mr. Corton is probably the best staff member to take on this item, so.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this is an annexation. This is the adoption resolution, or the final step for the annexation, for the Cook-Meadle Hills annexation. If you recall, back in June 10th, we brought forth a resolution for the intention of annexing the remaining portion of Cook-Meadle Hills and the Art Sickler piece, which is roughly 20 acres. Since that time, we went through the motions or to annex it, mailed notices, certified mailings to all the property owners. We have received no objections as of date. City staff recommends approval of the resolution attached in your packing materials.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Corton. Do we have a resolution number?
Forty-eight dash 2012.
Forty-eight dash 2012, okay. Are there any comments, questions here by Commissioners?
I have a question. Mr. Sickler was in today to visit with me, and he asked me about the property behind his home, and Ed, Mr. Corton and I talked about this before. That is going to remain agricultural, right?
The property is actually zoned rural residential, and I've talked to Mr. Sickler about that on several times. We're not proposing any rezones for the property, to leave it as is for the immediate future. So it is, it's being used, you know, in a rural, rural residential setting, you know, they have a couple of horses and the rest, which is fine, but it is not agriculture. The area, if you look on the zoning map, has been that way for several years. It's rural residential, and as far as I know, they're in compliance with that.
He's just concerned about his horse business, so rural residential would be fine unless he starts plotting it up into smaller, or someone buys it, right?
That is correct. I basically told him that, you know, we, you know, the compliance issue with respect to the horses would be the same as it was for the last several years, as it would be today and also in the future. You know, for the residents in that area, I'm not proposing any rezonings. Being part of the city, they may come back. Like, I've spoken to the Sicklers on several occasions about potentially splitting their property where they have the existing house, and then they have the larger piece, what they would need to do. I have spoken to them about that, and also their real estate agent as well, and, you know, they're, they have different ideas of where they're gonna go, but at least they have been notified generally of what they, what they can or cannot do with their property. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Duca?
Yes, he just said that he didn't approve of the annexation, but he wasn't, there wasn't anything that he thought he could do about it. So I said, well, at least you can ask questions.
Absolutely.
Okay, anybody else? Is there a motion regarding Resolution 48 dash 2012?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Sarah Second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We have a 5:05 timetable item. This is a special use permit, and Mr. Corton, is this one yours also?
That's correct, Mr. President. This is a special use permit to amend an existing SUP for convenience mini-storage located at southeastern corner of A Street Southeast and 10th Avenue East. The applicant has come back for an additional building. They have an existing building on site. They would like to add another building, which would total two. The property is zoned agriculture, and as such, it would require a special use permit or an amending of the existing one. The planning commission and city staff recommend approval contingent upon the three conditions of approval that are listed in your summary information. I won't read those into the record, but essentially that's just making sure or ensuring compliance with the existing code. Mr. President?
Is this a motion or, this is not a resolution, is it?
No, it's not a resolution.
It's just, it's simply a motion to either approve or disapprove the special use permit? Okay. Okay, any comments, questions by Commissioners? Is there, if not, is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment of the special use permit?
So the motion is to approve the special use permit?
Whatever he said.
Yep. Sarah Second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a 5:10. This is a public hearing, and Mr. Corton, I think this is also your item.
That's correct, Mr. President. This is a rezon petition from Ag to PUD for property immediately to the south of Lyons' Second Platte and the existing Lyons' PUD. If you recall, that came through, I think about two months ago, for a PUD and also a platte. The applicant has since then purchased property directly to the south, and in order to avoid confusion, they followed staff's recommendation to amend the existing PUD to include the new property with the old, and so the PUD plan will be amended accordingly. They are in the process of coming with a, with a platte for that existing property to the south. City, city staff and planning commission recommend approval with five recommended conditions, and those are noted in the adopting ordinance. The property is located to the east of Fourth Avenue East and to the north of where the extension would be for 29th Street. And with that, I'm available for any questions if the commission has it.
Do we have an ordinance number?
Mr. President, that would be number 1485.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone that wishes to comment regarding ordinance 1485 may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Is there anybody from the public? There's no one from the public, so we'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'd invite any comments by city Commissioners.
President, now move that we approve first reading of 1485 to include, including the five conditions outlined by Mr. Corton.
Sarah Second? We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. That completes the timetable agenda. We'll go back to the non-timetable agenda, and we'll go to item six, Public Works. And Mr. Saun, you have some comments regarding solid waste collections.
Gravesite.
Did I miss something?
Six A.
Six A?
The agenda was amended to include that item as a consent agenda item.
I don't have that on my agenda.
Yeah, so if you, if you review the electronic version that was forwarded to you, that, that item specifically was moved to the consent.
Right, but, but it is really difficult to go back and forth between the electronic version and all the handouts, so I'm just going off the printed version, but that's okay. So there is a, six A is cemetery.
Correct.
And Mr. Saun, is that yours?
Mr. President, I could briefly talk about that. This is a contract for burial and reburial of human remains within the city limits for all the Dickinson cemeteries. This is a two-year term. Attashed within your package is the, is the contract for that. We had one, we had went out for RFP. We were recommending, city staff's recommending that we award the contract to Lane Lowman, who has performed these duties in the past, and with that, I'm available- And with that, I'm available if you have any questions.
How much did the prices change from the previous contract to this one?
It changed, I remember talking to Danny Smith. It increased, it wasn't a significant increase, but it did increase. The prices are comparable, or actually less. We called around other jurisdictions in Bismarck and Mandan just to compare the prices, and the prices are actually lower than that. We just wanted to make sure that that would be, that would be in the ballpark per se, but the prices did increase. If I recall right, on the RFP, I think this is the only respondent to that.
So the motion would be to approve this contract? Is that what we're doing?
That is correct, yes. Every two years, we bring out the contract for burial within the city cemeteries. And so this is, our contract would expire in October, so we're bringing forth this new contract to go for the next two years.
Okay. Is there a motion regarding this contract now?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Other discussion?
Mr. President, I'll wait until after we vote on this, and then I want to talk about it.
Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. You had a question or a comment? Yes. We got hit pretty hard on a editorial, or a letter to the editor this last week about the cemetery's condition and so on. Are we short of staff in there to maintain them, or is that, I mean, what is the condition? I drive by, but, you know, I've never really been in them recently. What do we need to do, or?
With respect to your question, Commissioner Steiner, I'm not aware of the letter issue. With respect to our staff, I think it may have just been a timing issue. For the most part, our staff, we have two full-time staff, and then we also have temporary or seasonal for that. In order to keep up with all of our roadways that we mow, all the rightways, and then we come back and also keep up with the mowing and the appearance of our cemeteries, it's a two-week cycle. You know, one week is doing the rightaways, and the other ones may come back to that. And it may have just been the latter end before we mowed that. I could check into it and give you an update with respect to that. We are, you know, as a lot of staff are, we are pretty stretched. That being said, I think we're able to keep up with it with our current jurisdiction and our current responsibilities. If we do significantly increase our rightaway with, let's say, with annexations in the future, then, you know, we may have to come back, you know, with an employee, and we had discussed that. But overall, we're able to keep up with it. I personally think that it was just a timing issue. You know, it's like, you know, you have your mowing of the yard on a normal season, you have to mow it once a week. You know, when it comes around Friday, it's not looking that good. Saturday, you may mow it, and then, you know, the next couple of days, it looks good. I think it was probably a timing issue, but I'm not personally aware of that issue, but I could check in and give you an update if you like.
I just read the letter, and, you know, it seems like every year, we get one, you know, and I think you're probably right. If we're doing it every two weeks, I, you know, I don't know what it would take in staff to change that, but, you know, it could have been a timing issue, like you said.
It's difficult to make up, you know, to keep up, you know, on a day-to-day basis, and, you know, it's a sensitive issue as well. You know, it's one in which everyone wants a well-groomed cemetery, and if it's towards the latter end to be, you know, mowed or upkeepd, or, you know, that could be an appearance which you're not happy with, and that's understandable, but we do keep up on it. I personally just think it was a timing issue. I'm not aware that we're significantly falling behind with respect to keeping up the appearance and mowing for our cemeteries.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I, you know, as long as this has been brought up, I don't think our cemeteries are irrigated, are they?
No, they're not. The question, I don't know.
I don't think they are, and, you know, I know that's been talked about in the past, and we do have to also, much of the letter talked about that. It talked about the lack of water. We're in a pretty tough summer, so have to remember that.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Kessel, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, President Johnson. I did talk to Danny Smith, who's in charge of the grounds at the cemetery. As Mr. Corton said, the general practice is we do mow every two weeks. The only exception to that rule is around Memorial Day. We do allow an extra week, simply because we have a policy that doesn't allow flowers or other objects to be left at the gravesite except for during Memorial Weekend, and we allow those items to be left on-site for at least three weeks out of respect, and then we remove them and then mow again. So, but our general practice is every two weeks, as Commissioner Jackson mentioned, those sites are not irrigated, so they do get brown in a season like we have this year. So we may be able to, with treated wastewater, you know, that's a potential product that we could use, depending on piping and such, to water those sites in the future. Maybe a discussion we can have at that time, but, and he also did say that they have struck to that schedule. They've not missed a week that they were scheduled to mow.
Does Mr. Smith, he'll have to work with Mr. Lowman, too, as far as, you know, burials, cutting, whatever?
Almost definitely, yes. Commissioner Duca, they work together on those issues on a regular basis.
Can I go to Mr. Soren now on solid waste collection update? Okay.
Save the best for last.
That's what we're doing.
I do have an update on solid waste collections, and thanks to Aaron and his staff, you helped put this PowerPoint presentation together for you. We want to run through some of the issues that we see and give you kind of an update on how the routes go, based on what we saw or heard at the last meeting and some of the concerns that some of the citizens are expressing. So with that, we'll go through some of the route regulations that we do have. As you can see by the photo that we've got here with the unbagged garbage that's in there, we encourage everybody to put all their garbage in the garbage bags, because when they pick these cans up and dump them, the wind usually is blowing here, and that generally will blow that out of the truck and down the street, which creates problems. So by getting all the garbage, loose garbage, put into the garbage bags before you put it in the can, it helps reduce the, prevents littering and reduces odors, and it helps with insects and other nuisance. Another issue we see a lot, particularly in the alley cans, we get a lot of odor complaints, and generally, it's animal waste that gets dumped into the cans and creates some of those problems. We do ask people to bag that up before they put it into the containers.
Commissioner Soren, I hate to interrupt you. Could you explain alley cans? Those people who don't have them may not understand what those are.
Sure. We have a couple of different ways that we collect garbage. One, individual garbage cans that homeowners have. In the areas where we have alleys, and they're generally higher-density commercial areas, we have alley cans where we put one large 300-gallon can, generally per four residents, and they share that can. So if a neighbor's doing something, in this case, with animal waste in a can that someone else doesn't like, it creates problems. So we do have several of those. We've talked about trying to get rid of those. The drawback to that is, obviously, we have added stops we have to try and do on our Boxes, we certainly accept boxes. We do have a recycling program for cardboard, but if you do put them in the cans, we do ask that they get them broke down. Oftentimes, we'll see them wedge the can and not allow it to dump into the truck, which does create problems. Of course, people might come back and not have had their garbage dumped because it actually didn't come out of the can when they tipped it and they didn't see it, or something like that. So anything we can do to help shrink the size of those helps out on their route as This is something we're seeing, especially in the construction areas. The lids on the containers, when they blow open, and there again, the winds, it blows the debris out of the cans, you know, so we encourage that you try and keep the lids down and not pile a can so full that it creates issues where those lids stand up. It also damages the cans and creates issues that we have to deal with in trying to repair those or replace them. You know, it helps with the odors and insects and other things there as well. We do accept construction debris, but we don't want that in your garbage can at home. It creates, it damages our equipment. It potentially causes staff injuries in trying to deal with that. We do ask you to bring that out to the Baylor facility to get rid of any of the construction materials, dirt, rocks, cement, things like that. Our trucks just aren't set up to handle that kind of debris. Ashes, we do have several locations around town where we have ash dumpsters. We do ask that, as we're coming into the season and getting closer to that time of year again, to utilize those. Oftentimes, and I'm sure Chief Seavock could support this, but if, you know, people will think the ashes are burnt out and cool, and they'll dump them in, and there'll still be hot embers in there and potentially cause fires. So we do encourage people to use these dumpsters that are out there, just to try and help prevent those types of issues happening. Tree trimmings, branches, this is another thing we hear a lot. People will pull them out to the curb and leave them set. We do ask that they get cut three- to four-foot lengths and bundled. You know, we do that for a couple of reasons. It helps us prevent equipment damage, but probably one of the bigger ones is because of our staff and try to help prevent any injuries that we may have. We do have to handle that material when people bring it out, so we do ask that it gets cut down and bundled. It also helps us provide a faster, efficient, and effective service to the citizens.
Mr. Soren, on your side lift trucks, in this case here where the branch is, is there an area on that truck where the driver has to get out himself and lift those, and put those branches in, or do we follow up with another truck?
We follow up with a different truck to pick all that stuff off the curb that would be sitting there.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, that's not from our side load. We touched on this a little bit earlier, but the construction material, you know, we, it must be hauled out to the Baylor building. You know, the debris becomes so much that the guys, particularly our rearload truck, would be the ones out picking up additional weight garbage that's set on the curb. This becomes very difficult. Rolls of carpet, we've seen, you know, all kinds of construction debris. It does create some issues for our staff to try and pick that up, so we do ask that everyone bring any construction debris out to the Baylor facility for disposal. We do ask that the containers get set out by 6:00 AM to get picked up. You know, we don't guarantee that that's the time we'll be by there, but we do often get calls that we've missed a container that was placed out. So that's kind of the guideline. We say if it's out by 6:00, then that's when our routes start, so we'll be able to ensure that we get everybody and not have to backtrack the route. It kind of keeps us on task and on time with our service, which is becoming more and more of an issue as we add these accounts to them. We just don't have the time to backtrack on some of the routes to get missed cans. We also ask that the handle of the container be towards the house. That ensures that it gets emptied properly when the truck lifts it up and dumps it in. It helps prevent the damage to the container and doesn't require us to get out of the truck and turn it around or something like that. It just helps with the whole process. The extra trash shall be placed in garbage bags, cans, pails, barrels, et cetera, will not be emptied. That was an issue that came up a couple of years ago, where somebody placed some things out there, and, you know, we've had both ways, where they expected us to take it all, and we didn't because we thought they were just using it as a container. So they get called back to come and replace their garbage can that they set out there. We've also taken some things that weren't intended for the garbage that have been quite expensive items. It was some boxes that had some pumps in it, I believe was the one that I'm thinking of. They set it out on the curb for a pickup, for someone to come and pick it up to go out into the field, and our truck got it before theirs did. So make sure that we, you define what you want to be thrown away. We certainly don't want to throw away stuff that people aren't wanting us to take. And then setting the containers close to the curb. Truck arm obviously has a limited reach. It allows efficient service. I believe the next one, there's, if there's cars there, we ask that you get it away from the car so we don't have to worry about damaging it. Make sure it gets out past so the truck can reach the can. Snowbanks are another issue that we run into. This is one of the issues that was brought up at the last commission meeting about the containers and not being full. We certainly, you know, we try to provide a service. We're asking that people fill the containers up first instead of setting it on the side. We do have a second truck that has to come by and pick that up, and all we, anything we can do to help reduce the amount that they have to come back helps us on our collection and efficiencies.
Sean, I have a question on this one. You can see that the container is almost full, and if they added more, that big bag to the top, the lid probably wouldn't close properly. And a few slides ago, you had mentioned that we need to make sure that the lid is closed. And so I got myself into this same situation where the trash I had sitting to the side of my can, if I put it in the can, the lid wouldn't have closed properly. So I set it to the side, but then my trash can wasn't full, so then they only emptied my trash can and left the garbage that was to the side. So how do you rectify that situation?
Well, obviously, every situation's somewhat different, you know, and we can look into that a little bit more. Our goal is to try and make sure we're filling up the cans and not setting a bag on every side beside every can, because the additional amount of work that that second truck has to come back and do is just time and resources that we're struggling with, so.
So do you want the lid shut, or do you want the extra bag on top that would have fit in there, but then the lid wouldn't close properly?
If it would get most of the way in, I'd say put it in there.
Okay.
Commissioner Altman, I recommend you have several different sizes of bags, and you, choose the one that works, yeah.
You know, another option, you know, for 50% the original cost, you could get a second can. So if this was a reoccurring situation for you, we've been trying to encourage people that way as well, to get two cans. That also helps with our operation.
So if someone wants two cans, do they just call City Hall here, or what do you?
City Hall or the Baylor building, and they'll get them set up to add that can to their account.
Okay.
Can you do that just for the summer months? This seems to be an issue every summer, and then it goes away again when the lawns aren't being cut. So then would you take the can back for the winter? So then would you take the can back for the winter months, or?
Can you just get one at Christmas time?
If you only wanted it at Christmas, we'd ask that you just bring it out to the Baylor building. It's certainly something we can look at. I don't think we have anything set up as to how long you have to have it, or, you know, so if you wanted to get it for six months and then cancel that service, we'd come take the can.
Thank you.
Mr. Soren, this is the part, the issue that I've received phone calls on, this part right here. And what has happened is the truck comes along, notices it isn't full, and there's two bags next to it. He dumps it, but it comes out and puts a sticker on the can telling them what they need to do, but won't pick up the bags that are left there. And then the follow-up truck doesn't come and pick them up either, so they're, the bags are left there for the whole week. How does he know when the bag, when the garbage isn't full? Is there a mirror that shows him when he's dumping it, or, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, they can see the can when they pick it up.
Okay.
Well, but if the lid is closed without physically getting out, how do you know that that is not full and that's why the bags were set?
Well, when they're tipping it, they should, they can see it, I believe, yeah.
Okay. But here's the situation. Then he comes out with the sticker, puts it on the can, but then leaves the garbage there. I would think that, you know, is it?
Well, I understand what you're saying. The challenge is, it's because there's so many, and if we pick it up, I think we've tried the other approach, and it doesn't seem to fix it. We've actually seen a huge reduction in the amount of our rearload guys having to pick up because we started this policy and trying to address the issue.
In this case, he put the sticker on and then left after he dumped it, which is fine, but then the follow-up truck didn't come by. So did he not call the follow-up truck and tell them that there was bags there? It's almost like, hey, you put that on the side, we're going to teach you a lesson. Here's the sticker, we're going to leave your garbage with you. I don't think we intend to do that.
No, I think he does. I think that's his point, Commissioner Steiner, that they've tried to do it the way you're suggesting, and it doesn't seem to cure the problem, but by leaving the garbage on the street for another week, it gets the citizens' attention and cures the problem. So I think what Mr. Soren is saying is that they are deliberately doing that.
Yes. That was the intent, was to try and change the behavior and get people to comply.
Which is why I asked for this here at our last meeting, so we can let the public know exactly. I do get those phone calls sometimes.
Sure.
Two of my neighbors.
Well, and, you know, this is good to do, I think, and get the word out. If there's something that we're doing that we shouldn't be, or the commission doesn't agree with, you know, certainly let us know. Obviously, one of the challenges we have is to try and make our operation as efficient as we can in trying to collecting it. We're adding hundreds of accounts, it seems like every month, but this year, you know, we'll probably add 500 new accounts to the same routes that we've had throughout the course of the year, which just takes more time to try and deal with. So we're trying to be more efficient in what we're doing, and we're asking the residents to help us with that.
My point to them was that we just can't have a truck driver getting out and lifting 400 extra bags, 500 extra bags on his route. I mean, it's just physically demanding, he wouldn't, they probably wouldn't be able to do so.
Well, we actually run two different types of trucks. We run the side load, which is, has a mechanical arm that picks up the trash receptacle. Then we run a rearload truck where we look for waste on the curb, and that is physically loaded into the back of the truck by one or two of our workers. Is it two workers?
Two workers, and they'll get out.
And of course, if you have to, if we had to load all of our trash that way, that's very expensive. That's very labor-intensive, plus it's going to be equipment-intensive because, you know, your equipment's going to work slower. So all he's saying is utilize the receptacle first, you know, and utilize it properly, but utilize it first. Anything else that won't fit in there, that is properly bagged up, will come around and pick it up. Now, I suspect if we talked with other cities of our size or larger in North Dakota, most of them probably don't run the two-truck system that we do. They use the mechanical system to pick it up, and if it doesn't fit in the tub or in the receptacle, you have to take it someplace.
Yeah, that is a huge service that we provide that I think most people do take for granted.
And I think it's a great service. I mean, and I think it's one of the things that really helps to keep our community a clean community, and I would certainly support us continuing to do that. But in order for us to continue to do that, simply your message is we need some help from the citizens. I think that's what I'm hearing.
That's what we're saying. That's what we're asking.
The other thing here is that some of the public thinks that by putting their lawn in the bags and next to the garbage can, that it's going to get used for composting out there. I told them, no, it doesn't matter. If it's on the curb next to it, it doesn't get in the recycling or the compost pile there. So you might as well put it in the garbage.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Or take it down to the dump or the.
We do have several sites where we do take lawn clippings, and we do use that for compost, but when they're in garbage bags on the side of the curb, they just get mixed in with regular household waste. You know, a couple of issues, obviously, a staffing issue in trying to recycle, and you got to get rid of all the plastic bags and stuff out of that, which means once you're on-site, you'd have to cut everything open and dump them, and we just don't have the resources to do that, so. And leads right into it. We do have compost material, including grass clippings, leaves, garden waste. They, you know, they can be hauled to the Baylor building. We do have several drop-off sites throughout town. We do have several people that are using them. Unfortunately, we did have to get rid of one because of the abuse that we had at the location, but, you know, this does, increases our landfill longevity by keeping that waste out of there. You know, minimizes the issues we have to deal with with methane gas out at our solid waste facility, as well as helps reduce odors. We talked about tree branches and cutting them. If you want tree branches over four foot in length and not bundle them, we do accept those out at the Baylor building if you want to haul them out there. It allows us to, we'll grind those up. It helps save on our staff injuries-wise, as well as helps with our equipment that's not set up to handle that kind of waste. Bag solid waste placed adjacent to the containers is not to exceed 50-pound limits. This is, certainly with yard waste, can be a huge issue. Here, you can see in the picture, it's kind of an exaggeration of a situation where there's a lot of bags, but we've had people that will set bags up on the curb, haul their lawn clippings out to that bag and just completely fill it, and you couldn't even think about picking up the bag anymore. When we come by, or they'll grab it and the bottom rips out. So we do, because these guys got to man individually pick that up, or our staff has to handle that, we ask that we try and keep those weight limits down and remember that they've got to work with that as well.
So are you saying 50 pounds is the maximum you can set beside, or each bag that you set has to weigh less than 50 pounds?
Each bag.
But you could have as many bags as you want?
You could.
So you could have this situation as long as each of those bags were under 50 pounds?
If you had this situation, we'd like to see recycling. But, but yes, you could. And obviously, you know, part of my presentation's encouraging people to think about our staff and how we can help make things efficient and move forward, but, you know, as the mayor has mentioned, we're here to try and keep the community clean, and if this is a situation that someone has, and, you know, obviously, they're not all going to fit in their container, so we would pick those up. This is another issue back to one that I mentioned earlier about trash placed next to the container. If it's on private property, we won't pick it up, even if it looks like it was intended to be thrown away. Goes back to the issue I talked about where we grabbed a box that wasn't meant for our facility. It was meant for someone else's, so it just helps avoid confusion. Appliances and tires, we don't, we don't pick those up. They must be hauled out to our facility at the Baylor building. We just don't have the equipment and staff to handle that type of product. And then any of the appliances, we'll try and get those recycled. Some other policies, you know, certainly in today's environment with all the construction activity, we see trailers like this with debris that's piled on it. It must be a secured load. We have issues if they don't secure, things falling off in the street, other cars hitting it, it litters the ditches. You know, it just helps ensure a clean environment and, you know, traffic hazards. We've seen that quite a bit. We have addressed that, and it's getting better. Trying to separate loads. This is one of the issues that we had with oil-filled waste. We had, you know, all types of products that come in, and, you know, construction debris, household waste, metals. You know, if we try to bail that material, it creates problems for our equipment. If we haul it just out to the landfill and dump it, then we get the loose papers and stuff that blow all over, which end up in the fields next to us, and we got to go out and pick it. So we ask that people separate it so we can get the construction debris where it needs to go, we can get the household waste in the Baylor, and any metals, we can get recycled. It helps with, you know, our staff. We've had some issues with some injuries because of batteries that got put in there and had explosions and things of that nature. So we're really starting to push the separation policies to try and ensure we're getting things where they need to go. This again, we're making sure that you're identifying what products you have on. In our environment, we're seeing a lot of different things coming to our facility. It's important that we know what we're getting and how we're supposed to handle it. And then we visually inspect all the loads there again to make sure we're getting it to the right location, and we're actually getting the product that they're saying. We do see people throw things underneath, you know, maybe a bunch of pallets, trying to sneak things in, and you go and dump it into our woodway section, and you end up with a bunch of chemicals or something there. So we have started to visually inspect every load, too. Importance of enforcing all departments' policies, procedures, and regulations. It helps us reduce some overtime, increases our route efficiencies, reduces time lost to equipment repairs. You know, our equipment, just by nature, has a lot of mechanical moving parts on it. It is prone to breakdown, so that is one where we do end up with them down. You know, our wind-blown debris, we've talked about. We're trying to reduce that as much as we can so we're not impacting the neighboring properties around our facility. It ensures compliance with North Dakota Department of Health regulations. It prevents the unacceptable materials from entering the waste stream, protects general public's health and safety, and provides for a cleaner community and a safer environment for the region. I didn't touch on it, but, you know, we do have 23 other communities that come in here, and we're trying to help those other communities as well with this facility, so.
Sean, what are the general charges if you do bring something out to the Baylor building? Say you had an old sofa or yard debris, and you bring it out to the Baylor building, and you're an existing customer of the city of Dickinson?
Generally, if you're within the city limits, like a sofa, and that shouldn't be a charge. If it's construction debris, I believe we're at $30 a ton right now, looking to go up to 40, I believe, for 2013.
If you're a private citizen, and you just removed some carpeting from your house, though, and you bring it out to the Baylor building?
That'd be considered construction debris.
Okay, so there would be a charge for disposing of that?
Yep. White goods, appliances, I think are $10 an appliance, and that's because we're responsible to make sure there's no freon or mercury in those.
Any other questions or comments? Well, very good presentation, Mr. Soren. You'll have to pass our compliments on to those who had input into it.
Sure will. Thank you.
Are there any reports or comments by city commissioners?
I was just going to let you know that regarding real estate in Dickinson, under-residential, and these are only the ones that are listed through multiple listing. There's still a lot of for sale by owner ones out there, but there are about 140 properties listed right now, just in Dickinson, and those are all residential. It's not townhouses or condos or trailer houses. And I kind of broke it down for Mayor Johnson, because he always asks me these questions, and I wasn't prepared, but 22 of them are under $200,000. 35 are between 200 and 250, 35 are between 250 and 300,000. And then there's 24, probably between 24 and 29 are up to 350, and that's the new range of the building, of the new construction from 3 to 350. And 12 of them are between 350 to 400,000. We have five that are between 4 and 500,000, and one at 600,000 and one at 700,000.
Is 140 properties listed, that's, is that quite a few more than where we were a year ago at this time?
Yes.
Would it have been typical a year ago at this time to probably have less than 50?
I would agree with that. I think we, they were just getting into the construction by the end of June and July last year, because we had such a hard, long winter with the thaw.
And surely those 140 are ready to be occupied, or?
Yes.
In other words, something that's a month away from occupation would not be included in that?
No, they usually don't list them until probably flooring or whatever, but by the time you put an offer in, and it takes about 60 days now to get an appraisal, and we're lucky if we're getting them at 60 days, and with the title companies, 60 to 90 days. So they are getting them listed a little sooner, but the buyer likes, the consumer likes to do that, too, because then at that point, they have a choice of at least picking appliances or whatever.
These are not all new homes. These could be older homes, too, that are listed.
Oh, yes. Existing homes, they range probably in the under 200 to 300 at the most.
Okay. So what do you think this means? Does this mean we're kind of catching up with demand in terms of supply? Are you concerned at all?
Well, we had a real, like, three weeks where it was very slow, but normally at this time in the year, when people are getting ready to get their children into school or people are going to college, there's a lot of shifting going on, so, but now it's picked up again, but not, not as much as we would like it to at this point.
Okay. Well, thank you for that report.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, you can step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.